Councilor Vasquez.
Here.
Councilor Lucero.
Here.
Councilor Padiya.
Here. Uh, people of the agenda. I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Your second.
Council Reynolds. Yeah. Council Vasquez. Council Lucero. Council Padiya.
Yes.
Citizens to address the Council Bruce Latham.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, my name is Bruce Latham. What I'm coming before to tell you of an incident that took place. I mean, it is such a low-down blow. This summer, I live up on the hill there, but McDonald's. I've been around some marginal pumps, I've got them, and I know when the problem started. That pump there at the house, their leak, just started sucking air, sucking air. I knew what the problem was. I called down to the city and told them, said the boy up there. The boy came up there, he's a, I believe he's died now. He was, been with the city twenty-seven years. And I told him, wasn't getting no water. I'm gonna go through what he tried to tell me. He said, Bruce, go up there and get your hydrants under your hands, clean them out. I said, no. Then he said, you've got to go down there and pull that meter. If you don't touch that meter, I'll tell you the history of that. So finally, I said to him, why don't you go over and start that pump on the west side? Because earlier, when that line was put in, the old man said, you never have low pressures from being caused that pump. So he called up another guy that was up here someplace. And told him, he said, oh, we've got twenty-five or thirty feet of water. I said, that's not it, tell him go check the pump. About fifteen minutes, he called the boy with the city. He said, the pump has kicked off. Okay. I'm not, I'm gonna start with the, start that pump, it's gonna take a little bit of time. Years ago, that, that line wasn't put in. They, they decided they needed another well. We found out that they was gonna build that, and that's when we started building, put building the house up there. Mitch Wells was the mayor. The old feller had a contract, told me, you go get Mitch Wells to send me a note, and I will take care of it. So I took it to him, he says, okay. Don't you lay no line there, because when I get ready to set all that equipment, it's got to be set in sand. And that's why I sat there. People don't realize what an engineering feat that was. You just didn't bury into that line and send the water. We got time to set.
Hey, Bruce, you, you've lost me. What exactly are you talking about, Mark? Do you know what he's talking about?
Yes, sir.
Who, who did you speak to at the city? That's my public works director, right there.
I guess, I don't know. I said, I came and told him, it's because of what took place, your honor. They, that you, I'm telling you what a, what a construction that had to be to get water. And the, and the old man told me, don't let them come down there and mess with this. It's a delicate engineering situation. And that's why I have raised so much heck. Because that, you, you got to go from a hundred and twenty-five, twenty-seven PSI down to eighty. And that old feller, he worked, and he brought D'Amico Chavis in. D'Amico could be here telling me the same thing, Mayor, if a certain thing hadn't happened to him. And I'm the only one surviving. That old man worked and saved me about a hundred, about eighty thousand dollars by letting him fix, put that in before the water started. And what has happened? This has happened, I've been, my windows got broke here right after the fourth. And it's all because I've been getting threatening calls. It's all because I stood up and told the people what was wrong. And I want my, that window needs to be replaced, and I want you guys to replace it.
Well, he didn't break your window, Bruce.
Yes, some of your clan did.
Some of my clan?
City clan, because.
Do you have proof of that?
There are.
Do you have proof that one of my city employees broke a window?
Well, why would they be calling me? Why would they be threatening, why would they break my window?
Who's threatened you from the city, Bruce? I need names. I can't just have you say, I spoke to this guy, spoke to that guy. I need names of who threatened you, so we can deal with this.
Here, have our some telephone numbers.
Chief? Would you please step up here and talk to this man? That's why we got a police department there.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, if you're being threatened, that's the man you need to talk to, right there.
There's numbers, they call me, then hang up. But I've been able to jump over. And, and they were two later on, and four days later.
When did this take place?
You'll have to check the police department. They got a record when they called. Right after, my windows got broke the day after the fourth of July, next morning. And that, and that's, these windows, after they was broke, one afternoon, about a week ago, you can check the police department. This, now a war came by, and that two of these guys was with a hood and their face covered up with a can. He was on the mall, and he called me, Orin Charlie. Said, Bruce, they's getting ready to throw gas in there, said you play some fire.
And that's one of our employees? Orin Charlie?
No.
No, Orin Charlie, not a hope, not a hope.
We got not a hope boys that work for us, Bruce.
He works for the school district, I think he's.
No.
Okay, I know Orin Charlie, yes.
Is he not anymore?
Bimbo, his brother Bimbo. So, these have been the.
Oh, I got, I got.
Yep, there. So, I, I want, my windows need to be replaced.
Who did you speak to at the city, though, Bruce?
Lady.
You spoke to Laura?
Bruce, Bruce has come in a couple of times, but not any time recently about broken windows. I know the last I heard Mr. Latham did not when his meter changed, and our staff, I think Mark dealt with that, but I've not heard anything about broken windows.
You're talking about the new meters?
Yeah.
I came down and told you about the spilling of employees, man. That, that you had two employees that had.
Yeah, the guys that changed the meters were not our employees, they were accrued from out of town.
Well, I'm telling you, whatever you did, my water pressure is not there. I had good water pressure all these years. And whatever they did that day down there, I, I do not have the water pressure, man. Something needs to be done, I don't know what you guys did there installing the meter.
Mark, take a look at that one.
Yes, sir.
See what the hell's going on there?
Well, we'll pull the meter and make sure it's clear, absolutely.
Make sure, make sure whatever's happening there, make sure he gets his water pressure. As far as the broken windows go, Bruce, I mean, if you can prove that one of my city employees broke them, we'll pay for them.
Well, why would they get broke after I complained, that's when it happened?
I don't know, Bruce, but, I mean, you gotta have proof.
Well, you people need to know what the.
I mean, this is, this is way. We're not Congress, or we're not trying to throw people out of office without any proof. We gotta have proof before we go after somebody.
Well, I want you people to know, Mr. Mayor. Now, that's where we're, what about fixing T-Wall Week up there?
What's that?
Don't you, that's what they call the trashy southwest part of Gallup.
I was gonna say Gallup.
Where's my code enforcer? We're working on it, Bruce, one day at a time, buddy.
Okay, can I tell you how they worked money? Boy, Rick, remember in the spring, when you met and they patched them holes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, they lasted about two months, that concussion that they mixed with them broke up. A waste of money. They came back here a while back and re-did it, and now it's breaking up. Why didn't they patch the rest of them holes when they were there the last time?
Mark, can I answer for that?
We, we patched, we patched some holes, and, and they'll be back to patch more holes. But the real situation there is the lack of drainage on that road.
Yes. This is a street, maybe I wash his everything down, but uh, South Avenue.
Is, is there a way, you know, we have a new paving machine, right?
Yes, sir.
What, what would it take to alleviate that issue with that street?
To, to put drainage on that street?
I know it's a costly venture, but.
Yeah, it's not, it's not high on the priority list, it is on the list, but we're starting with the high priority roads, and then we'll keep moving through town.
All it would take there is some, that old black oil and some pea gravel. That's what it was done years and years ago. There's been no work done on that since.
You're talking a chip seal?
No, it is pea gravel.
Yeah, that's what a chip seal is with the oil.
That's what you call it, that's all it would take.
Well, you pass the holes first, and then you put it down?
You don't use it to pass the hole?
No, 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 no. You pass the holes first, and then you put down the, the pea gravel. Anything else, Bruce?
You, you guys have forgotten, that, that street up there is terrible, it's front of old Pierre Rosas Place. It, it's nothing then, then you go down where Dennis Malers was, they leaked last year, and they replaced it, the pipe. They went up there and put some kind of that dukes mixture down, and it's all dissipating. Whatever they're mixing does not hold up, Mr. Mayor.
We'll take a look at it, Bruce.
Okay, I thank you very much.
No, I thank you.
Okay.
And if this chief of police don't help you out, you let me know, because he's a good guy.
That's right.
He's doing a heck of a job for us. All right. Anybody else wanna shoot us, shoot at us up here? All right. Okay, we'll go on then. Uh, discussion on the charter, anybody out there wanna tell us we're not in compliance with the charter? Because I know we're not in compliance with the charter. We, the regular citizens, see council meeting minutes. Did anybody see corrections? I didn't see no corrections that need to be made.
I make a motion.
Second. Council Reynolds. Council Vasquez. Council Lucero.
Yes.
Council Padiya.
Yes.
Resolution, first quarter budget amendments. Bar. Too bad it ain't a real bar, I could use a drink.
Good evening, everybody. I gave you guys an extra attachment this time. It's the one, it's, I think it's eight pages long, pink highlighting on it. So with our new Tyler system, we are able to create this great report that I gave you. This is just the recap of everything. And this is kind of the breakdown. There's some funky lines here and there, because I did a little cut and pasting, there was some stuff on there that I didn't think you guys cared about. But just wanted to point out a couple of things to you guys. So I highlighted a couple of different sections on page one. The first column you need to worry about is, is all the different accounts. So the first one is four thousand revenues, that's all of our revenues that we get in the general fund. And then the third, the second one that I have highlighted is the year-to-date column. That's what we've received for that specific number. So what I did is I took the four thousand revenues, forty thousand revenues, and we have two point four million dollars. Everybody see that number? It's kind of at the bottom of that first section there, right here. Okay? So then, and then just to the right of that is a percentage, it's twenty-four point three one percent. So basically, what this report is telling us, and what it should be telling us, is that we're twenty-five percent through the year as of the date of this report, which is September thirtieth.
Fred, how much you worry about?
So we should be at twenty-five percent. Both revenues, revenues theoretically would be higher, it would be nice, and expenses theoretically would be lower. So I figured this would be helpful for you as council members to, and I don't wanna go through the whole report. If you have questions, please come see me, but just for your information, you know, when, when somebody says, well, why are we spending so much money here? Why are we spending so much money here? This gives you a real clear picture of where we really are spending money, number one. If we're on budget, you know, our revenue is where they supposed, where, where they are supposed to be. Kind of helps us understand the individuals, and then we lump it all together for the first page. So then, the next, the next little asterisk that I did was actually the mayor, which is you, it's the mayor and all the council. So that's your department. And your total to date is forty-two thousand dollars. That's only twenty, that's twenty-three percent of budget. So, couple things, we, we budgeted correctly, probably, and we're right on budget with expenditures. So, so anyway, so those are just some things that.
That's the way we do it in solid waste authority, and I appreciate you doing that, because it makes it so much easier to look at it, I mean.
And it's a lot of information, and, and.
It's so much easier to get it.
You know, there's one other, let me just.
I like that.
Let's go to page four. So, the highway and street department, which is Department fifty-one oh four, is the first little asterisk I have there. They're at three hundred and seven thousand dollars, which is thirty-two percent of budget. So they're a little over with what they're doing. And, you know, there's all kinds of reasons for that. One is that there's a lot of paving that happens before it gets cold. So that number's probably a little bit higher this first quarter, theoretically, the second quarter, it should even out. And then the cool thing to me, this one, the total, where it says total GF, it's total general fund. So we spent two point five million dollars in the general fund, which is twenty-four point six percent of budget. So we're really right on task. So if you have any more questions, I'm happy to answer them. I don't think you guys want me to read every single thing on here, but I would encourage you to go through this, and, you know, if you have something you're concerned about, or something, you know, you wanna talk about, or whatever, I mean, this is really good information for you, it's some really great numbers.
Any questions? I just wanna say I appreciate what you did.
Thank you.
Because it's, it's made things a lot easier for me. My first three and a half, four years, so we got Laura and everybody in here on board, I was using my mind all the time, okay? No, no bull, because I'm not going to jail for nobody.
Right, right.
So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So the recap, basically, the only purpose of the resolution is to accept the first quarter financials, and then we have three inter-fund transfers. So if you remember, the last quarter, inter-fund transfers are where we have to transfer money so that we don't have a negative balance in any particular fund. The other thing is, I wanna explain to you, so we transfer somewhere between eight and twelve million dollars every year out of the utility department into the general fund to pay all our bills, because all of our bills are paid through from the general fund. And in the old system, that transfer didn't reflect on any of our financial statements, so the state never cared one way or another about that particular transfer. They cared about, you know, if I, if we had to transfer money to the golf course, or something like that. With Tyler, the new system, it reflects as an actual transfer whenever I do that money. And the problem is, the second quarter and the fourth quarter, I have to send them the financial documents right out of the accounting system. And so if I have ten million dollars worth of transfers, and we don't have that accounted for, then they get upset about that. I did not realize that when we finished the budget up this summer, so I didn't account for that eight to twelve million dollar transfer that we do every year. And so that's mainly what this bar is. There's the two little ones for the, for the municipal street and the, for the waste fund. But the big one, that three million dollars, I know it's a huge number, but we do it all the time.
They send that check for pay.
Every year. Right, we do it all the time, it's just in the old system, it wasn't, it was accounted for differently, and so the information never got to the state. Well, now it does, so trust me, in next year's budget, that will be there, we will have that bar next year. But for this year, we're gonna have that every quarter, however much I transfer out for AP.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Not today.
For resolution nineteen sixteen fifty-seven, physical year twenty-first order, let me see. Run once. Run twice.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Fred.
Come on, guys, I'm easy.
Seven. Council Reynolds.
Yes.
Council Vasquez. Council Lucero. Council Padiya.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, please sign it tonight, because I've gotta get this to the state first, leaving tomorrow, please.
We'll take care of it, O'Shea.
Thank you so much.
That's Main Street, Special Contract Services.
So the Main Street contract is due to expire October, this, this month. So we have an addendum to renew. The past contract gave us the opportunity to extend the contract for four, four years total. So this would be the second year of this round of contracts. The allocation for funding is thirty-five thousand, that's what we budgeted. And the scope of work, I left the same. I don't know, we have several from Main Street here that made.
Where's your new director? That's who I wanna meet, is your new director.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman, City Manager. Unfortunately, our new executive director resigned today. I called Laura and I informed her, but it was unexpected. We had every faith that it was gonna work out.
It wasn't, anyway.
It just didn't.
What was her name?
Her name was Savannah Penya.
I'm not comfortable approving a contract again without a director, guys. Every time we do this, I mean, how many directions we been through in the last few years?
While I've been on Main Street, we've had one, two, three, four.
Four in four years, right?
Right.
Four years, not bad.
Fortunately, you could think less for us losing our last. We're doing our best to find someone, we just don't wanna, we thought Savannah was the right person, and I think she felt that it was, she was, she's only twenty-two and fresh out of college. I think when we had our meeting today, I think she felt a little, felt a little overwhelmed, and doesn't have enough, felt like she didn't have enough experience to do the job well. And so, you know, we accepted her resignation, thanked her for being honest and letting us know upfront before we invested a lot of time and training, so. We will go back to, to our search in, in good faith.
Well, I would like to see you get blended, the thirty-five thousand until you find your new director.
We do have a couple of prospects of a pipeline that we think are, are, would do well as director.
Was it less before, or was still the same as thirty-five?
It's the same, we had it last year.
Larry Berry came up not too long ago, and we came up with thirty-five.
I don't know, guys, I think it's time to combine the chamber and that together, and, I mean, we're not getting what we really need from either of them. We might even put them under one director we might get, because then we have thirty-five thousand long before we're giving the chamber. I don't know, guys, I'm just. Before, before Main Street was the bike rally. We took away the bike rally, and now Main Street's about what? They can't keep anybody. They don't, I mean, think about it, guys. The Veterans Day event is nice, Main Street takes care of that. The Fort Jade Pride is nice, but I mean, other than that, what do we do?
I'm, I'm, Mayor, I, I don't disagree with you, all, we're a group of volunteers.
Yes, and I understand that, it puts you guys in a, in a really bad predicament.
Right, we, we would like nothing better than to have a really good executive director. We will continue to, to work as we have.
Maybe something that we need to consider as a city is paying one of our employees a little extra money, that thirty-five grand, to be the Main Street director, too. I mean, something's gotta give here, guys.
Laura and I have had this discussion, and I think we could further research it and see if it's feasible. When I did discuss it with the Chamber Board, it was made clear to me that the Mining Museum and the Chamber Director are one and the same, and the Mining Museum, I guess, provides the funding for the.
The City of Grants provides the funding for all of that, make no doubt about it. For the Chamber, for the Mining Museum, for everything that goes on over there, Joanna. No one else gives them any money. It all comes from the lodger's tax and the City of Grants right here. So, they, I mean, we're the ones that open the government, not the Chamber Board, okay?
Okay.
Just so you know, that if we decide to make that move.
I had no idea.
Yeah, no, we fund everything that goes on over there. Every single dime that they get comes from the City of Grants, okay?
Okay.
Just to let that be known, perfectly clear. Guys, I would like to table this and look at it. Take a good, hard look at it. You guys research about maybe if we can hook up a city employee that's getting partially paid from both, something along those lines, where we can fix this problem, where we have an actual director that's taking care of things instead of getting close to our major events in the summer and saying, oh, wait a minute, I quit, I can't handle this. And that's what's happened with all of our last, at least Savannah did it before we got to June.
Yeah, I guess, I, I mean, we, the, the benefit that we do have is that we have a great board, and we're all engaged, and we all work hard. And so we've been able to, to.
To maintain it without a director.
Right.
And I, I give you guys credit for that, I really, really do.
There's also an issue, Mayor, that you may wanna discuss with Laura regarding the, the block grant that we're applying for now. And what we need for that block grant, what the city needs is a copy of our contract. And so you might wanna discuss that with Laura while we are making this decision.
We, we're putting in for the Drake Blocks Grant, the city is in partnership with Main Street to fund the, you know, speed limit, slow down the design for curveouts and stuff like that that would slow traffic down, amenities that would be in the downtown area. The grant is due Wednesday. Two criteria, though, we may miss one. Two of the criteria is that they, I guess they need their contract uploaded to their dashboard, and then they need to have a director, too, though. Do you mean you'll have that by Wednesday?
Well, Daniel did say that he, that he would, he knew we were on the Huntford grant, and that would not be one of the, for a director. And that would not be one of the conditions, he would allow us to bypass that. And I would ask the council to, to continue their faith in us. We will keep working as we have been in the past until we have a director, or we look at other possibilities, or other, you know, maybe look at other methods of doing business. But we would like to continue to move forward and, and continue to keep Grant's Main Street a viable organization in our community, I think we have a lot to offer.
Comments? Sidney?
I'd like to fund that.
Okay, Manny?
I'd like to fund it.
Rick?
I'd say we table it, we get more information and see if we can find someone that's gonna be able to help him out.
Fred?
If we found it, funded, we've got a spend it, see? I say we table it.
I'll entertain a motion. To either table or to pay it.
Make a motion to pay it.
Okay, second.
I second.
Council Reynolds.
Yes.
Council Vasquez. Council Lucero. Council Padiya. I vote no. I vote to table this, until we figure out what we're gonna be going through.
Okay.
Okay, because we've been doing this for three, four years now. Every year is a repeat.
Yeah.
Okay? And I was taught in the Marine Corps, that if you keep doing the same thing, getting the same results, you don't stop doing it, that's insanity.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
We'll table this, so come back with a director. And I need this basically.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Put an ad in the paper.
Okay, next, resolution to increase fees and services, that's the Grant Memorial Park.
Am I supposed to do this one?
Uh, I think everybody can do this, right there in front of them. They should have probably already looked at it, it's pretty damn self-explanatory. The only question that I had on this, guys, is when somebody buys a plot, okay? Say I go down and buy one tomorrow. I should, could I pay for the internment fees and everything at the same time? So that when I kick the bucket, my kids ain't here writing a check to O'Shea to open and close my grave. And if you look right there, it says, open and close fees for double internment death, three hundred for the first internment and two hundred for the second internment. So actually, you're letting it slide for, until the second person dies anyway. Whatever is politically correct to say, okay? I'm not politically correct, I don't want to be that. So that was my question, that's the only thing that I had on it. And that was my feeling, so.
Comment.
Go ahead, Fred.
Okay, if you, some of these plots are being bought, and they, some people last thirty years.
Yes, that's exactly what, that's exactly what we discussed today, Fred. So if I go in, I pay for the internment, and the cost of the internment goes up by four hundred dollars between now and the time I kick the bucket, that's not right, so.
It's the same thing with the open and the close. Because the contractor, you go to office fees every year, and in thirty years, it'll go back five times that.
Yeah.
So I see it that way.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to have a little discussion of that. See how people feel about it. And that's exactly what me and Laura came up with today. You know, I go buy my plot and then I end up living till I'm 105. Well.
It happens.
I hope not, but that's.
All those plots, all those people that sold them, not to the line of code, they were 50, what, she made them 73?
Yeah, and now they're selling them for 2,000, sure. Yeah.
So the cemetery board and our staff researched what it costs us to open and close was the big issue and what other municipalities are charging and they're recommending an increase in the fees to be more equal to what it costs us. And it's still not what it costs us, but it's getting close to covering the fees we pay.
I agree it's reasonable.
Well, I agree it's reasonable, but also we should be making sure that we're covering our costs, guys. So if they need to be a little bit higher to where we're not losing money on this, that's something that we need to look at, guys. Because us losing money on the cemetery, hell, we need to expand it. We're just about needing to expand it now. We can't afford to lose money on this.
Oh, we could do it, man. We lose anything? We're coming out even?
Um, yeah, we're not coming out even. We get what it costs, more so the maintenance of it, to mow it and.
The water?
Water and to fertilize and all of that. Yeah, we're not recovering that cost.
See, when I was there, we went up to that 2400 dollar. Because Mr. That guy that do, was ready to answer. He was on the board with me. He said, he buried somebody up in San Diego. It was 10,000 dollars.
Yeah.
And here we were with 700 dollars off the town, so we went up to 2400 dollars.
Let's pleasure the council. You don't hear the same?
No, no.
Okay, well, then let's pleasure the council.
I'm going to increase the fees.
There you go. The ones that are presented in the red highlights, right?
Mm-hmm. I second.
Second. Any comments? Any comments now that we got the motion to second? Any discussion?
And look at it in the near future, see how it's going to work.
We can look at it in another two years.
Yes.
Okay? Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Yes. Cool. That one is gone. Next one. Where's Mario?
So am I supposed to call him when John?
Yeah.
Where's Mario?
Can we call Mario and we're gonna.
Donny, I'm gonna bust his shop. You know that, right? His name is on the stakeboard. Not Donny, not you, okay?
How much is he doing for us?
And Danny, what for DM?
I'm great. I'm in a.
Appearance fee.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me, Mario?
Yes, sir.
Why, no, this is Modi. Why ain't you here?
Oh, here. Uh, Modi is here. I cut up a lot later and I asked the guys to present and then I'll, I'll call in for any questions, sir.
Because I'm sitting here, I'm looking at this, and it's got your name all over. It doesn't have Chris and Donny on it.
No, sir. It, it does not. It does not. But I'm confident that they, they can, they can present as well.
Okay, let's do this.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Donny Dunham is with us and in here, in company here. We're here to just give an update on the, the projects we're working on for the City of Grants. And yeah, with that, we'll move on to the next slide.
Chris already broke it, dude.
I'm definitely confused.
So, so yeah, here's, here's the agenda. We're going to go over the 2019 construction progress, 2020 construction, construction projects, capital infrastructure and funding, the 2020 legislative session, USDA water and wastewater disposal grant loan program, general obligation bond, and then go over any questions. So the 2019 construction projects that we have going on are the Second Street Phase Four and Five, Washington to Roosevelt, the Second Street Channel CBC project and the Jefferson Storm Drain. And we have individual slides for each one. So Second Street Phase Four and Five, we had a substantial walkthrough last, last week, Wednesday. And so, so basically, we're essentially done. There's just some punch list items we need to take care of. Small items like pool boxes and concrete collars and a few items like that for this, for this project. What we're looking at here, these pictures, this is just the storm drain along the, on the side of the road, on the west side of the road being installed. And this, you can, you can kind of see the, the pavement section. We have some.
That, we talked about.
Yeah, we, we have the geo.
Down. It looked like it did what it's supposed to do.
The GeoGrid, it, it, it performed well when we, when we tested it and it, it came out very well.
Like it did what it's supposed to do.
Yeah, and so, yeah, this middle picture, it shows construction in progress. You can see the, the GeoGrid reinforcement, the base course and your curb and gutter on the side, and then of course the, the finished product there. And so, you know, a few, a few more weeks and we should be done with the, completely done with that project.
And that one include the bridge head there on, no, that one include that one?
No, no, not the pedestrian bridge. No, not yet. Yeah, that's next year. And then Second Street CBC structure, so we installed three, they're four foot high, six foot wide boxes at the school entrances, the, the main entrance and the north entrance. And so we have some photos here just getting, getting started and then, and then the formwork and then the just about completed box culvert. So this one is, is, is final completion. We're, we're through just a few documents. We need to, to completely close the project out and, and off the books. And then the Jefferson Storm Drain project, this one was bid. It's been awarded at council and it's going to get, construction is going to start this coming Monday, November 4th. We, we've held, held the pre-con and so it's, it's going to go on into the, into the spring. They're going to start with undergrounds, obviously first, and then, and then, you know, we have to wait to pave till, till it warms up enough to pave. But I mean, just to, just to sum up this project real quick, we're installing some storm drain up above the Bible Baptist Church here. The, the city has gone ahead and dug out the majority of the, the volume of dirt from the pond. The, the contractor is going to come in and fine tune the grading there. We're going to install an inlet to collect runoff from, from Smith Street here and install a storm drain to, to drain into the pond and then eventually out into the Grants Canyon Royal. And then we're also repaving Jefferson from Smith to almost the Grants Canyon Royal. We're redoing the intersection with Washington there and we're installing storm drain in the, in the purple here to connect to the Arroyo. And so that one will be done in the spring.
So that's all new. You're not going to replace, you're not going to tie into that old shit that's down there, right?
No.
Because what you're showing there is an old line.
That, um, it's, we're along the same line, so we're going to replace it. And then 2020 construction projects. Mario, did you want to jump in? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. I want to just make sure that the phone is, is up against the, the mic so that everyone can hear.
You're coming too loud here, buddy.
Okay, very good. So what I'm going to do, Mayor and Council and Miss Manager is we're going to identify this first slide, the projects that we're anticipating letting for construction in 2020. Those projects are Roosevelt Avenue Sidewalk, the Second Street Channel Phase Two Pedestrian Bridge, Mayor, you were inquiring, inquiring about just a couple minutes ago. We'll talk a little bit about First Street Phase Two and Phase Three. We have, we have slides for each one of these. And then finally, the Washington Avenue Bridge. And at any time, if there's questions, please, please bother me. We're going through all the projects. And then right after these projects, we're going to talk about the funding. So I think there will, there will be more questions once we get into the funding. Next slide. On the Roosevelt Avenue Sidewalk, you can see that Roosevelt, the city had undertaken the design, spent for the design of AD improvements along the north side extending to Level Canyon Road. A couple of points taken away for council is that Mayor has asked for, for staff and ourselves to work with the DOT in a couple of areas. The DOT is presently moving forward with a design of AD safety improvements at Level Canyon and Roosevelt Avenue. We, we are sharing our files with them. In addition to that, we have put in a request to Arif, technical, I believe he's technical supporting engineer. Or he might be AD assistant district engineer. In any event, Arif with District Six is, has committed to identify additional funding. We have bid the Roosevelt Project out and they are, the bids that came in at about 250,000, lower, 250,000 including taxes is more than what the city has budgeted at 200,000. We are waiting a response back from District Six and are very hopeful that there will be additional funding there. So I just wanted to point that out. It, it is designed, we are working with the D O T, we are coordinating, we have met with them and there is an additional request for funding assistance.
Question. Are you changing the design to put the entrance off of Roosevelt Avenue instead of going into the North Hills Road and turning it into the parking lot there?
We are, we are doing that. That's based on our coordination meeting that we had with.
With the B L M, right?
Correct, correct. And what you don't see here either, Mayor, is, is we are laying out a conceptual layout for the parking just north where it says pedestrian crossing from the cemetery.
Well, it looks like they're going to give us the extra 30 to 90 feet that I asked for off the back.
Good.
Okay, just so you know.
Yes, sir.
Okay, keep going.
The next slide, again, the Second Street Channel Phase Two. I won't spend too much time other than it is under design. It's totally funded. The schools and the city continue to work together. So for those members on the board that, that have an opportunity to visit with your school board members, please continue to just encourage the cooperation that's been occurring between the city and the school district. It was through that cooperation that we're building some of these projects. So again, this one is starting in the spring. It's getting late March, early April, just after the winter season. The next slide, and I'm kind of running these fast because we're going to spend more time on the funding. The next slide is First Street Phase Two and Phase Three. So where we are with this is that we, we have put it out to bid to CBS Contractors' invitation. We have a shortfall in funding. We have sent them. Last week, early last week, I visited with David Rodeo, who is responsible for the new House Bill 694 funding, the Local Government Transportation Fund. And, and he has confirmed, he has confirmed that he, he, his time with the DOT is short. And so now we are, we are coordinating with the Deputy Secretary, Justin there, with Justin Reese with the DOT. And so I will be in Santa Fe on Wednesday. May I put in a request to meet him Wednesday, the 30th, to, to go over this project? We are asking, we are asking the other DOT to provide the additional funding at the request of, of the, the Mayor's Office there. And we're, we're asking that the funding shortfall be expedited, to make funding available in the spring. On that note, Mayor and Board, I did run into Senator Clemente Sanchez yesterday, Sunday, and, and have, I have brought him up to speak on this. And so I let him know that we're, we're putting in a formal request to DOT to, for the shortfall and that we, we will be reaching out for legislative body to, to support this project. So if there is a shortfall, we're going to be pushing for it, for construction next year and probably will come out of it. Mayor and management board members says that we'll combine Phase One and Phase Two into one package since they will both be constructed next year. That should also provide an economies of scale for you all, a better bid by putting it together. I want to pause for a moment because this is one that's been, been in the books for a long, long time. It's, it's, it's important for other questions about it.
Because it's been in the books as long as I've been sitting at this table, buddy.
Yes, sir. Yes. So we, we, we will continue to push it. The next slide is the Washington Avenue Bridge. This one, I just want to, the takeaway here is thank you Board for having the vision. You may or may not recall that we had this conversation last December, I believe, or November, and this board paid for the design. So, so the city funded the design. We're able to put it in for Local Government Transportation Public Fund and funded for construction. So we, we anticipate this one going to construction in the spring. So it's just an illustrative point. The point taken away here is that the, the governing bodies' ability to, to really stay focused on planning and designing, getting ready, getting project shovel ready is, is the reason why we're able to kind of get these things off the ground. Okay, next slide is probably going to take a little more time. We're talking about capital infrastructure. It's important in this slide to ask questions if there are any because it's going to really lead into the direction of this upcoming 2020 legislative session. So we've identified in the capital infrastructure funding slide, Second Street Channel Construction, we're going to be, we have submitted to the Mexico Finance Authority Water Trust Board. There is a presentation on November 5th. Mr. Dunham will be up in Santa Fe. I'm sure that Mr. Don Haddamio will be there as well, presenting to that board. Again, the, the, what we're advocating and demonstrating to the Water Trust Board itself in Santa Fe is a project that is shovel ready, going to construction, put people to work, which is what the legislators plan. The second project, we submitted two, well, actually a total of three. Don can talk about one, but three on the Water Trust Board. But the second one that we submitted as well is the First Street Pond and Pump Station Construction. This particular project is not, is not designed, however, if you look at the results, a few bullets down, you'll see that I've already had a, a meeting with Mr. Carver over at the Roswell City Flood Control District. We will be submitting for design funding assistance from the Flood Control District so that we can get that project design going in the spring and have the First Street Pond and Pump Station ready for construction a year from now. So on the Water Trust Board, if you, if you get funding for Second Street or First Street or both, you will have that funding a year from today. So a year from today, we will be able to start going out to bid and getting the project ready for construction.
I'm going to hold you to that, Mario.
Yes, sir. Um, the Roosevelt Bridge construction, as we talked about, that's being funded by the Public Transportation Fund. So again, the previous slide shows we're going to be starting construction in the spring, right after the winter season. The, this one's an important one for, for the governing body, for the executive team. The Roosevelt Bridge design, right now we're, we're recommending and, and Mr. Don Haddamio has put on his list that as, as this governing body begins to prepare for their fiscal year budget in 2021, to make sure that the, the city allocates or sets a specific fund money to provide the design for Roosevelt Bridge. This is no different than what the governing body did before Washington Bridge. It's, it's getting the city to fund this design so that it'll allow us to position ourselves a year down the road for, for construction funding application. The next one is the Army Corps of Engineers Plating Assistance. This, for those of you that, the mayor may not be familiar, the Confluence, that's the, what, the term, the word that we use, the Confluence, where the Roswell City and the Grants Royal come together. That's the intersection, the Confluence. Upstream of that, there's a, several, several acres of available property that we'd like to turn into a biopark amenity for, as, as an amenity for recreational use, but also for.
This, this is what we discussed out there behind Future Foundations and Base of You, correct?
That is correct, Mayor. That is correct. And I, I was just telling that, that Don and I, and Donny and Chris today are all setting a room at the Army Corps of Engineers a little over a week and a half ago. And they are well underway. We did submit that formal application request and we should be hearing back from them in about three months as they work their, their way through the process. Only other takeaway on that is that there's a feasibility. It's what they call a federal interest determination that they've got to conduct. So we'll hear back in about three or four months if they're funded for their federal interest determination. Once it's funded, they'll notify us. Then we'll kick off the first phase, which is a feasibility study and, and the Army Corps will conduct that. The next one is fiscal year 2021 map. So here what we're suggesting, Mayor and, and Council is that kind of about a suspended approach even though right now, you heard us talk about, we're already working with. You heard us talk about, we're already working with, uh, NDOT to secure the funding for First Street. We're also suggesting that in January, when the solicitation for projects comes out, that the city considers submitting for a map application to fill the shortfall because that's another, that's another funding revenue stream that we can submit to, to fund the rest of First Street. So we just wanna make sure that we, we look at all the different funding streams and apply for all of them, uh, in, in case one doesn't work out and you've got another opportunity. So, so that, you don't have to make a decision today. We just presented to you today just for discussion, for you to be aware, ask questions. We will be coming back, uh, next, early next spring on this map application for, for this Board to, to approve a resolution. Uh, finally, or not finally, but NDOT, LGRF Co., um, in, in working with staff, Mr. Haddamio feels that we really should focus on Washington, uh, Washington Avenue from Smith to, to Jefferson and that that is a good project, uh, given that the Mace of the elementary is, is located adjacent to it, it's a project where we can work with the school district to continue the cooperative agreement, working together, so that the school district would submit on the same project. So this one, if, if this Council agrees that it's a good project, Mayor, we may have to ask for either yourself or the manager and Don to, to present to the Board similar to what you did with the pedestrian bridge project.
No problem.
Uh, so that, so we can get their buy-in.
No problem.
Okay. And then, uh, and then again, that won't, that won't have to happen until next spring, but again, just with permission. This final one on the USDA twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, uh, water wastewater replacement. I'm gonna go to the next slide and, uh, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna talk about the USDA because there's another, a few slides will die. Okay, so one of the important slides tonight is this twenty twenty legislative session slide. You, you will notice there are three major bullets. One for roadway and drainage, one for water and one for wastewater. Those three areas were identified or suggested for a number of reasons. The, the state has been, uh, the USDA loan specialist that we work with, um, in, we have to apply for this funding to start looking for replacement of sewer and water. The strength of the application is elevated. We were able to bring money to the project. I mean, if we, if we can garner capital money, then, uh, for water and wastewater in the twenty twenty session, that, that money can be committed towards the project. It will reduce your, your loan component. Again, it's a grant loan application. Um, in twenty nineteen, three, we did three of these projects. In all three, we strongly suggested to the communities that they focus on their capital money in these particular areas. They did, and they, uh, they were all funded through USDA. Uh, so again, having money, having a good portion of funding from the state to match with federal dollars is very important. Plus, it also lowers your principal loan amount in the application. Um, the other, the other, the other reason we show roadway and drainage is because when you go after USDA funding, this is important to, to keep in mind because the residents will pick up on this. USDA will pay for the water and the sewer line and they will pay for the trench that's required to install that water and sewer. That trench is typically three to four feet wide, no wider. What happens is you come in, you replace the sewer line or a water line and when you patch the road back, it doesn't look very good. Where we're suggesting that in addition to the water and wastewater capital money requests, that you go after city streets and drainage, roadway and drainage. Then you have discretionary use of that funding to put roadways back from lipper curb to lipper curb as you install your water and sewer. So again, just giving you flexibility that if you're coming in, you replace your sewer, you replace your water, you can also replace the entire roadway pavement section instead of just patching the road. So, so I'm gonna pause here because this is important. This is something that, that we'll be working through the Manager's Office and the CAG in terms of capital money requests. So I want to see if there's any questions on this one, thoughts or comments.
Anything, anybody.
I, I don't see anywhere in the mix, um, looking at applying for CDVG funds. Is that something that might be to our benefit as well?
Absolutely, it absolutely is, Miss Manager, and that is an excellent point. So, um, right now, the, now is a good time, between now and January, to start the public meetings. And, um, one of the things that needs to occur first is to define that CDVG project, ID which streets. Um, you're gonna have, this Council will have before you in November, the recommendation for the project, for the preliminary engineering report to start moving forward. So, uh, with, with their permission, Miss Manager, is we'd like to work with Don now to start, start putting together the public meetings, which are the first step towards CDVG in twenty twenty, for next year, twenty twenty?
Get on it.
For the application, okay.
I mean, come on, man. That's pretty simple there, Mario, let's get on it. We're not gonna get funding if we don't get on it.
Yes, sir. Miss Manager, any other questions in addition to the one you just had? That was a good, I mean, that's a good question, that was a big comment.
Another question, I, I just needed to know, and I meant to ask Don or the Mayor earlier, but I'm getting a few calls regarding the closure of Washington. Um, and I'm just curious, um, I've been, I've been blaming it on the schools, but I, I, I'm thinking they, they were the ones that requested for safety reasons, right?
The school came to us, I was the only one sitting on the council then. I believe it was two thousand and eight, wanting to vacate that road and close that campus down. And now with all the shootings and everything that's happened since two thousand and eight, to date, they pushed hard. And when we presented it to them at the, at their Board Meeting, they unanimously jumped all over it. So it's done, they can, it's, it's done. That's vacated, they're building a wall on the other side to close that campus down. And in my opinion, it's well overdue.
Okay, so I, I think some of the-
So you can start directing the phone calls to me if you want, or to Max Perea at this school.
I just wanted to make sure that we let the citizens know the reason behind it. And I, I think that's a good reason for school safety and a lot probably don't realize that that road runs right through the school.
And if you remember, when we were in high school, we had one that went right through, right by the round daily, right? To the, I mean, it was ridiculous. You'd walk out from class, jump in the car and take off ditching, you know? I mean, but that was back in the seventies before all the school shootings and everything else started to get out again.
If you comment, there was a trucker gave the other day, some parents, how come you put that, they pointed over there?
Yeah.
I go to the meeting, I said, don't worry, I'm watching the game.
That's right. Find out what's going on.
It just kind of reminds me and will remind our staff too that when we do do things like that, sometimes it's just the unexpected, the unknown that we need to just make sure we do some PR, I guess, you know? Which is, is tough to always remember, but I know it's been a long time coming. I've heard it talked about for many years, but I wasn't involved when Don and the Mayor attended the Board Meeting. So I wasn't quite sure, but, um, we'll, we'll work together just to kind of address the concerns as they come forward.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And, and on that, on that note, I just have to ask, I know that when we started construction, the, the, the team had offered, and we've been working with, with Don and, and periodically will ask, and if at any point this government body feels like we're not communicating enough, especially during construction, let us know because we've been put together, door handlers will be put together, uh, informational, uh, updates, uh, and, and then Don is big, this person, this person knows, they're posting it on the website. So we, we are paying attention to getting information out as much. And I know that on the specific issue of Washington Road, there was a master plan that, that was completed, um, about nine months ago. Uh, and that, that included participants from the city and from the schools. Um, and then there was, there was, uh, Donnie, I don't, uh, if you're there, uh, if you can hear me. I, I believe when, when architects did that master plan, uh, there was also, uh, public meetings, was there not?
Yes, there was.
Yes, there, yes, there was.
There was.
Okay, so, so all of that is documented. I mean, we have it in our files. So again, if, if they call you Mayor and, and there's, they're suggesting that, that, that there wasn't, just please let us know, uh, text me, text me.
You know, I'm good, Mario. It's all good the way we handled it, the way it went down. When we were at the Board Meeting, there was one person at that Board Meeting besides me and Don. Okay, and he's sitting out here in my meeting right now, Mr. Hoppert, okay? He was the only person that was at that Board Meeting while we discussed that with them. Um, we're moving forward and that road, if, if you go back and you look at the comprehensive plan that I did in two thousand and eight, when I first came on the Council, we were talking about closing that road there. It was in my comprehensive plan that it was done in two thousand and eight. So this has been coming for a long time. Now it's done, it's over. So like I said, you get any phone calls, just directly to me or to Max Benz, and we'll explain why. I mean, it's been coming since two thousand and eight, eleven years, we've been talking about doing this, so. And it's already done, Mario, we're moving on.
Yes, sir. Okay, so next slide, I'm just gonna, uh, briefly go through the USDA Water Wastewater Disposal Grant Program. Um, just really eligibility, ten thousand or less with this, with this, uh, the application cycle. We're getting it started now. Uh, because you are, you are all under ten thousand population, um, we're, we're not anticipating with the new census for any, anything of that, uh, to change. The next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what the purpose of the loan grant is for water. Construct, repair and improve or otherwise modify rural water supply and distribution. You can see there hydrants, pumping stations, treatment and storage, all of that is qualifying. Wastewater, again, construct, repair, improve, expand, collection, pumping, treatment or other disposal facilities. Historically, uh, I know the Manager has expressed, Mark has expressed, and Don, so possible lift stations that, that need some either rehabilitation or replacement. And so all of those would be evaluated as part of this program. Next is the Water Wastewater Grants. Um, they are a grant loan combination. It is going, it, it depends on a number of factors. Obviously, the median household income, uh, with respect to the, to the state average is very important. Uh, so the city should fare well. Their best case scenario, we can get the city up as high as seventy-five percent grant, twenty-five percent loan. The other important aspect of this is that the rates for both water and wastewater, we have to evaluate those as part of the PBR and ensure that the revenues, uh, the enterprise revenues that are being collected can repay back the loan component. And so if it's a seventy-five, twenty-five, if we can push, if we can push and get that seventy-five percent grant, twenty-five percent loan, you can now start to see why we recommended earlier to look at some capital money because then the loan component, you can reduce that even further by adding some capital money.
Didn't we, uh, already start the feasibility study on the water rates?
I am not familiar with, with that, Mayor.
Say that, say that loud and clear, Mark, come on, baby.
We're working with, uh, Smith Engineering. I know that's a cuss word, but, uh-
That's a very big cuss word, but go ahead.
No, they're, they're the ones that'll be working on the, on the water rate study. And that's going, uh, we're looking at using one of the CDVG, uh, funding opportunities to fund that VER.
When were you planning on doing this with the CDVG? Because you gotta have hearings and all this good stuff.
It's not CDVG, we're going to do an, that's our second NMFA grant.
NMFA, sorry.
Come on, Mark, you're, you threw me for a loop there, baby.
Sorry.
I've done several CDVG grants and now we're one to go to fly, bro.
Sorry, sorry about that. No, NMFA, my bad.
Okay, go ahead, Mario.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So again, I'm gonna blow through the next slides, I'm gonna blow through funding opportunities, the service area map, again, just identifying the, the current, uh, city limits. Let us dive into the proposed project schedule. Uh, that warrants about a minute or less of time. You can see what, what's the process for USDA. If you're looking at the, at the timeline, you see we've broken it up into quarters, starting with the year twenty twenty. So you're, you're going through an RFP process now, um, then that, that will, assuming that that gets reviewed, approved and contract executed, then you're looking at, uh, moving through from first quarter all the way to third quarter, uh, to have the preliminary engineering report, the PBR. And what we call the CE, the categorical exclusion, but the ER environmental report, that's fully approved. So in October, by October of twenty twenty, USDA wants to have that fully approved and they want to issue a letter of conditions. That is their notice to proceed to the city that says, okay, we've, we've approved the PBR, we've approved your environmental, you're good to go. Preliminary and final design may proceed, which then takes you into third quarter of twenty twenty-one for, we're anticipating a fairly large water and wastewater replacement project. Um, by the time you finish, finish the design in the second quarter of twenty twenty-one and then you put it out to bid, and then you're awarded to a contractor, then we're looking at starting third quarter of twenty twenty-one construction. That project with this bill is gonna take a year, is what we would envision. So now you see why we have a schedule from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. It's a really about a little over two-year timeline to take it from, from cradle to grave. So that's a very, uh-
Which, which project are you guys talking about here?
This would be the Water Wastewater USDA.
And what is that? Is that First Street? Which one is it?
At this point in time, you don't have it defined until the PBR is approved.
We have to define the project, right?
Correct. Also, you, you, you have it. So when you see on the schedule, it says third quarter twenty twenty, PBR and CE. So third quarter would be September, October of next year. You would know what that project is. Is that project five million dollars, is it ten million dollars, is it fifteen million dollars? You don't know until we go through this process.
Question.
By the way, this, this won't be done in silence, you're gonna have a lot more progress meetings between now and then as the project evolves.
We gotta have a project first before we can have progress meetings.
Yes. And this is on the schedule, because that's a lot of information on the schedule.
Mario? This is, this is kind of a big dream for us. We don't know what our grocery receipts are gonna be in a couple of years, you know? And all, and all this money that we're asking the federal government for grants, uh, we might not even qualify. So are we gonna do a feasibility study and spend our money on, on a big dream? Or do we wait until we actually see what, what can happen in that year? Because all projects don't take one year, they usually take at least four or five years from, from where I've been since I've been here, I see that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe that was Councilor Vuskis. Um, so, so, so Mayor and Councilor Vuskis, one thing I do want to just be, be clear for the governing body, that's a, that's an excellent comment, uh, by the way, is it's important for the governing body as stewards of the community and, and of the, of the city's budget that the commitment, uh, for, for USDA is you're not committing general funds, so it's not dependent on the GRG. However, you are committing an enterprise revenue. And the USDA will not approve you for a grant loan program until they've approved your financials. So you will only get approved after the USDA has evaluated your two-year financial and current rates and ensure that the, the revenue, the revenues from, uh, you, you took the enterprise can be placed to cover the loan component.
Before I'm even willing to go in for a loan, I want a project, man.
Yes.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Can I ask, uh, Mario? Will the, will the projects be generated based off of the asset management program that, uh, the plan that you guys are putting together?
Yes, yes, that, that will be a, uh, a significant, uh, significant driver because the asset management plan, as you know, Mark, and that's a great question for the Council to be aware. Uh, in, you know, we've evaluated the system and then we've worked with stock to identify the criticality of the individual sewer under water lines. And so the idea is that, that, that criticality matrix is what's driving the replacement needs or the rehabilitation needs very much so. So, good question, Mark, with good comment.
How much does this have to do with the buildup in the pipes that's eating away everything that we have in our brand-new wastewater treatment plant? That if we don't take care of, uh, we're gonna be needing a new wastewater treatment plant in three years?
That's such a good question. So, uh, that, that sort of information-
See, that's the, that's the type of project I'm looking at, Mario. Something that's actually gonna take care of the people's, the people's money, what we've already done. Because right now, what I'm getting from my people and from OMI, which is another whole ballgame, they're telling me the same thing. We've got a gas in our system that's eating our system alive. And we need to address that now, within the next year, because if not, we're gonna be behind that eight ball.
Right, yeah, and so Don, you might wanna try to get, but I believe that Don is working with the Smith to address, uh, that particular issue.
That's, that's that cuss word again, Mario.
Yes, sir, I apologize for sorry. But that, that, that is a type of information we'll capture in the PER and, and it absolutely does need to get addressed because when we go into these commitments, when we're designing water, when we're designing sewer, USDA is not gonna fund a project that's only gonna last two years. It's just not. It doesn't work because again, it's a grant loan. And so you have to be able to show and demonstrate that the investment, uh, and the service life of these, of this infrastructure is gonna outlive the repayment of the loan. It has to, otherwise it doesn't make sense.
Yes, sir.
So, any other comments? There's only one last slide, and then we're done.
Go ahead, Mario.
So the last slide is the general obligation bond. Um this idea was brought forward because of this extreme need to replace sewer and water. Uh you know, in the 15 years that, I mean, you've been privileged to take to work here in the city, you know, we've seen the number of ruptures with uh, with water lines, we've seen and discovered sewer lines that half the pipe is gone because of the congestions, Mayor just pointed out. Need to wait a clay pipe, and so the infrastructure's in, in dire straits and needs to be replaced. The general obligation bond is just uh, it's, you know, it's a municipal bond that is secured by, in this case, the city of grants. Uh by leveraging a levy on, on the properties. We're, we have brought this idea forward and need to secure legal counsel and a financial advisor. Legal counsel is Melindris and Melindris out of Albuquerque.
Melindris is right here when we were discussing this, right?
Yes, yeah, and she will be, she will be before you guys next month in November. Uh but what, what I wanted to really, the highlights and the takeaway here is the general obligation bond gives the public an opportunity to, to speak as to what they wanna do. Uh I put together, I showed you guys the city of Anthony there, they're a relatively new community. Uh less than nine years old, about 95, 96% Hispanic or Mexican down by the border and, and uh that particular folks would say, a lot of the folks in, in that area would tell you, you'll never pass the bond, you'll never pass, you'll never pass. That went to the voters, asked the vendor for some of their priorities, and it passed with over 80% vote, so. Uh I just wanna encourage the council here is that, yes, uh general obligation bonds is a, is a form of taxation, there's no doubt. But it, but it has a purpose. In this case, the general obligation bond, it could be whatever the, whatever the governing body wishes to, to focus on. In this case, we're suggesting to focus on water, wastewater, and um the streets. And the reason we're doing that. If you're looking to attract businesses, we need to take care of our drainage, we've gotta remove the flooding. We've gotta have reliable and resilient infrastructure. That's what, that's what industries are looking for, when they're looking at a site selection. Until we can take care of our infrastructure, it's gonna be very difficult to attract industry into the area. And if we can't attract industry to the area, we can't create more jobs, we're not creating more GRT.
You're speaking to the choir, baby. You're preaching to the choir.
Yeah, Mayor, so that's, that's the last slide, sir. Uh again, this is information only. What we're, what we're asking the council tonight to consider is your body capacity, as we understand it, is gonna be about about 3 to 3.3 to 2.25 million body capacity. Um you don't have to make a decision tonight, what, what we need to pick upon is, is what, what, what if you decide, if this governing body decides to move forward with the general obligation bond and let the public speak? What do you want that dollar amount to be? And what projects do you wanna put on the ballot? Because we have to work with the attorneys to develop the budgets and to develop the, the uh project location that could be part of it.
Talking about putting this on the ballot, you're talking the ballot in 2022.
In, is it 2022? I, I was under the impression it was March of next year.
Yes, March, coming up right now.
No, 2020, November.
Yes, March.
Guys, our election is in March, guys. It is freaking five months away from here.
This goes on the county's property bond. Because it's a property tax, right?
That is correct, that is correct.
Yes. So Mario, will uh Melindris and, or someone be able to help us figure out if, let's say we go for the 3 million bond capacity, um how much that would raise your average property tax owner's taxes?
Yes, she'll, she'll have a, she'll have a full presentation next month. Um we felt it was premature for her to present, uh present this month, because we wanted to look at all of the projects that you just saw that we're planning, how we're planning upon them. Get that in, in, in digesting a little bit. And the next month, when she comes in, she's just gonna focus on the general obligation bond, she'll have some tables. And she'll be able to show you, this, this is, this is how long you're going to be paying on the bond, is it a 20-year bond before you can retire, or whatever that number is that she'll present, she'll show. If, if your, if your property value is a hundred thousand, this is how much you can, you can expect per month on, on your bill. If it's a hundred and fifty thousand, you can expect this. So you'll be surprised, it's not, it's not generally as much as people think. And that's why I think in Anthony it passed, you know, by over 80%.
Any other questions?
Is there gonna be a list of projects that we can take a look at?
The, the list of projects, we're gonna, we're gonna strongly recommend are general and primarily because the language can be very restrictive. So for example, if you say, well, I wanna dedicate this to the new grants publicly located on such and such street. You do that, it limits it to just that location. What we're suggesting is let's focus this on, we were using the three as, as an example. Do streets and drainage is a project?
Whether we can move the money to whatever street we're, we need, right?
Exactly, exactly. As long as it's within the city limits, that's, that's your only uh condition. And the same applies to where.
We can't spend money outside the city, we know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you betcha.
And the tax only comes off of city property owners as well.
Yeah.
Correct. Correct.
One thing I'd add, Mayor, councilors, um city manager, I did send the a presentation to Don. If you want copies, just let us know. Um for some reason, some of these got a little washed out, and they look much better on the computer than it does right there, so apologize for that, but we'll get you whatever information you need, and more than happy to meet with you at your convenience.
Any other questions for Mario? Anything at all? Mario, thank you very much. Hey, I want you to know something too, okay? You spoke longer than any meeting I've ever held in this chamber.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry, this can be brief. This is a lot. You guys will probably be late.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Mario.
Bye-bye.
Just wanted to know.
Just as you were here.
Next one, uh funding extension, Resolution 191654. Come on, Donald, take it, Leonard.
Mayor, Mayor, Council, Miss Manager. You guys are already well versed in these resolutions, the two next resolutions, they're funding extensions for the current agreements that we have for First Street. It didn't happen this summer, so we're asking for a one-year extension.
The reason it didn't happen, guys, is because of the funding came in way over what we projected it to be because of the removal of the plum dirt. So.
So what timeframe are we looking at now?
Spring of next year.
Spring of next year, so 2020 or?
2020.
Yes, 2020. Okay.
We're short about 1.1 million, 1.2.
We were short 1.2, right at 1.2.
Yeah.
And you know, the thing that makes me nervous is it's a 30-day session. And she's got a lot on, on her agenda that run control, things along those items that are gonna take up a lot of time, so I don't know how much capital it's gonna get done in this 30-day session, with her priorities on abortions and guns. So we'll have to wait and see what we get there. I promise to be in sound effect once though, again, I will give you guys my word on that. I will be out there, sitting in the committee rooms, and I even know that we need money, okay? It worked this last year, so let's see if we can do it two, two years in a row, okay?
I just got back from the infrastructure conference, and they're anticipating a $2 billion surplus.
They're expecting a big surplus again, and it's all because of oil and gas, guys. And this is what blows my mind, is they wanna stop oil and gas in this state. At that point, how do we pay for anything in this state? And people need to think about that when you go to the booths this coming year. Because they're putting people up to run against true Democrats like Clemente. They got a progressive running against him. The Democrats are fighting own Democrats, true Democrats that actually do stuff for us. Okay, the progressives they're putting in, I mean, look what they're doing in Washington, absolutely nothing, guys. And if we put them in the state like we did the governor, that's what we're gonna get here, absolutely nothing. So please think about that as you go to the booths this next time. Okay, resolution, 191654, questions? Council, what do we wanna do? Entertain a motion for the extension and funding for Second Street.
I make a motion, Resolution 19 dash 1654 for a extension.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Pavia?
Yes.
191655, another extension funding for Second Street. Let's actually put a ditch.
Put a ditch.
Yeah, I, I make a motion to extend that funding for uh 191655.
Second. Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Pavia?
Yes.
Next one, Ordinance 191239, the loan increase.
All right, on the, on the agenda, and I put resolution, that's incorrect, it's an ordinance. Uh the, the bids came in a little, a little over? Oh, okay, maybe it's mine only. Anyway, the bids came in a little high, and uh loan was at 2 million, we needed it at about 2.3, 2.35, and uh asked for an increase, and there was no problem. They offered the 2.5 just so we have enough leeway, just in case. So this is increasing the loan from the NMD, Construction Borough from 2 million to 2.5 million.
This is on which project?
Jefferson Drainage.
Jefferson Drainage Project. Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I think we approved Ordinance number 19 dash 1239.
Second. Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Pavia?
Yes.
Cool. Resolution 191653, DOT funding agreement for the Washington Bridge.
Okay, uh this is only if we wanna accept the funds for Washington Bridge.
Yes. Any questions on accepting the funds for Washington Bridge? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Who's gonna make the motion? Make a motion, second, Danny. Counselor Reynolds?
Yeah.
Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Pavia?
Yes.
This, this one is a 5% match, unlike the other DOT agreements are 25%. This is a new funding uh source. We go after these funds, this funds again this coming year.
Bet you, baby.
Washington or something like that.
We don't. Number 11, Resolution authorizing NMFA planning grant application for the La Mosca Road.
You wanna do this one?
Les, you got a comment on this one?
Les could do it, yeah. You know, the NMFA has opportunities for planning grants for uh different economic, uh excuse me, uh Mayor, uh Councilman, uh this manager, and guests. The NMFA has planning grants for economic opportunities. How this would have a, a huge economic opportunity and, and you know, no telling what it'll do to our community. So we're simply requesting the authorization to apply for the grant, I believe.
So I think typically something like this would go under the county, but I don't believe they're eligible.
They're not eligible.
They're not eligible to apply for this.
Because of what happened with their overspending of the 9.5 million.
Oh, is that why? Because this is so, this is so far from grants?
Yeah, so I agreed to, to pick it up, because it will be a benefit to the city of grants, a big-time benefit.
And I, and the cog is also involved with the process, so they're well aware.
And we got everybody involved with it, but the county they can't have no money. They, they're not gonna give them any planning grants. They're not giving any grants at all until they prove that they're solid. And they're not even close yet, so.
So this would basically do a feasibility study, right?
I think you passed a resolution a number of months ago in support of that, and then so now we're moving along with the.
Well, I voted no.
Uh you were the only one that voted no, though, the rest of us don't.
Oh, yeah.
And this is the same NMFA as a water study grant, and so it's NMFA.
Any questions? Well, I agree with you, but what happened in the county with the last people.
I know, I know.
We don't have any control over that. All we can do is move forward and try to make things better as we move forward. We can't fix whatever happened in the past. Well, you know they will, you know they will, but that's besides the point. We'll know, we'll know who did it, okay? I'll entertain a motion for the planning grant for the La Mosca Road.
I make a motion, uh Resolution 191658.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Pavia?
Yes.
Right on. Number 12, Construction Award High Street, Fifth Street to Third Street Concrete Repair.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yes, be safe, go on.
Appreciate it.
Yes, be safe. Keep him in line, Donnie.
Okay, you have two documents before you pack it. Uh one is the uh CES bid that came in from TLC. And another is a, a color map, so I could explain what some of these mean. Um the orange lines that run parallel to the street, High Street from Fifth Street to Third Street. The orange lines are curb and gutter. All of that with this will get replaced. Uh the purple lines is where there will be uh valley gutters. And then also drainage will be installed right on Fifth Street. If you notice on the north side, there's always ponding that occurs. Uh that'll, that'll get fixed with this, this tiny stretch of drainage. And then the only green stretch is where we're planning on adding about $8,000 worth of sidewalk. And the red line is where our guys will pave. And so what I'm asking for is for the uh Construction Awards to CES for $139,604.86. Any questions?
Does that include tax?
CES fees.
No tax.
No. No tax.
I didn't see no tax on it. I do not see tax. Can we make sure and say we add tax to this?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, just in case.
Just in case.
Well, that's fine. So when we motion that, make sure we put the plus tax in.
So Mark?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a construction crew now that can do this? Instead of, instead of sending it up with TLC?
I, I don't have a concrete guy. We've, we've tried to get a concrete guy, and we can't, we can't get one to get hired on with the city crews, no, sir.
But we are still looking for a concrete guy. Too bad you don't know concrete, William.
I do know concrete.
Well, then how about applying for a job then, buddy?
How much you paying?
Not more than less, though. Yes, sir. Absolutely, absolutely. Uh when, when do they start? We've actually uh kinda jumped the gun a little, and, and we're hoping to start in the next two weeks, so right now, funny.
It warms back up Saturday. It's back up to 70 degrees.
We're going concrete blankets on this show.
Yes, supposed to work that up Saturday.
Yes, sir.
For another couple of weeks.
I make a motion, we approve the 139,604.86, minus, I mean, plus tax.
Plus tax. Second. Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Pavia?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. There, this way.
Last one, a resolution for the election.
So I think I'll shake it to the left, because it was on the counter, Steve. We were waiting to hear from the attorney regarding um what to do about the question regarding our charter and term, term limit. So the attorney told me today we could do three different things, three possibilities. We can leave the charter as is and not enforce term limits. We can put it up to the voters and risk the chance that they will vote to keep term limits and then not be able to enforce it. Or we can change it by an ordinance and risk the possibility that we would be sued, because uh basically charters are, are set up so that the public votes on the language in the charter to hold elected officials accountable for the kind of government they work.
Okay, on that note, if anybody were to sue us over that, the state has to cover us. Because it's a constitutional deal that the state has ruled term limits are unconstitutional in municipal limits. Okay? In my opinion, we oughta just do it by ordinance, get this thing over with and done with, and move forward. Because like I said, even if they sue us, the State Supreme Court is our defense. Because they ruled that term limits are unconstitutional, guys. And the city already voted that they're unconstitutional when they put Ms. Larson in for a third term. That ended our term limits, regardless of what anybody says. So I say that we just do it by ordinance and move forward. It's the least expensive way to do it. Because even if someone does, and I don't believe for a second that anybody's gonna sue us, because if they were, they would have already sued Elise Larson for running for a third term. So I say we do it by ordinance and we move on. Comments from the council?
So you've got your conferences where the, where the attorneys and everything else and the state chairman?
Yeah, the attorney, the attorney is recommending that we put it to the voters for a vote. Um she said, why would voters have to set up a charter and then we could change it willy-nilly? That was her language.
But we didn't change our charter.
To the voters.
Okay? Okay, the state constitution, when Albuquerque filed their lawsuit, that's what changed not only our charter, but every charter, every home rule charter across the state was changed by that ruling. It's a constitutional ruling that came down from the New Mexico State Supreme Court. And that's why I'm saying, we're wasting our time here, guys. Let's do it by ordinance, let's get this over with, and let's move forward. Because our citizens already voted this down when they voted Elise Larson in for a third term. That ended everything. And the state constitution, the state Supreme Court has already ruled on this.
I would recommend putting it to the voters to vote on.
The people already voted on it, Laura, when they voted her for a third term, they voted on it.
They already know what they're voting on.
Oh, no, that's, now you're saying that we got ignorant people in Grants that don't know what they're voting on. Come on, guys.
They didn't, yeah.
They didn't know that, okay? Because it came out, it was in every single one of their debates. It was brought out in every single one of their debates, every forum that was brought out. I ran around town telling everybody to vote for Mike Culture, so did Fred Palia. All of us did because it was in violation of our charter, and they did it anyway. Period.
Must have been so loud.
Oh, I'm sorry, my delivery is so loud. I apologize to you.
What do our attorneys say about an ordinance?
She said...
They gave us one of the three options. They gave us the three options.
She didn't recommend that option.
Because of a possible lawsuit that we won't have to defend. The state Supreme Court has already ruled on it, guys.
They ruled about term limits, they didn't rule about charter changes.
Charter changes are in the term limits.
Somebody would sue us because we changed our charter without putting it to the...
And like I said, and if they do that, the state Supreme Court has to defend us. Yes, they do.
That's not true.
Yes, they do.
My deal is, guys, they're gonna vote for do whatever with the ordinance or the charter. And then, some might don't vote for that, some might will vote for the people, for the person running. Have it happen, you know, it's...
Right.
It chooses the way it is.
Yeah.
That's what's gonna happen.
If they give her chance, the people of Grants vote to retain...
Then, then it's no left way.
Then what, then what happens then?
Then we sit here every night and we say, we are in violation of our charter. And that's ignorant. That's totally ignorant, guys. I mean, come on. It's totally ignorant. That's what happens. We're gonna sit here every night and we're gonna say, we're in violation of our charter when the state constitution has already ruled that our charter is in violation of state constitution. It makes no sense, guys. So, I say, we do this by ordinance, and I will entertain a motion to go ahead and change this charter by ordinance and move forward with this, and then we don't have all this extra stuff on the election ballot, and we move forward. Or, we can go ahead and do it this way. But one or the other, something's gotta get done here, guys. And I say, putting it back on the ballot is absolutely wrong because it's already been ruled on by the state constitution, by the state Supreme Court, and it's already been ruled on by the people of this town when they elected Elise Larson for a third term. Period.
The bottom line is, there aren't term limits.
No, there are not because it's unconstitutional.
There are no term limits.
It's unconstitutional, and that's our point.
Yeah.
And that's my whole point. So, let's just go ahead, change this thing by ordinance, and we move forward.
In how words, you can have a three or four terms?
Yes, just like Elise already did. They already said it's okay when they voted her in for a third term.
Then, do you just take that part?
Yes, we would take out, if you look at this part that she's got right here, all of this right here would be taken out. And we would do it by ordinance. We would take out this section two oh two, and we'd take out section four point zero three. And that's what would happen to the charter by ordinance, guys. And according to the state election board, what do they say? We don't need to take it back to them, right? Is that what they told you at your election training?
One guy.
Yeah.
The one that...
The one that put the election...
Put the election things together.
But the attorney for the municipal league agreed with our attorney.
Well, my point is, and here's the thing is, when you're talking about attorneys, how do they get paid?
Well...
They got, Laura, they get paid by arguing stuff like this right here. And they were all for us fighting this. Why? Because then we have to pay them to go to the New Mexico Supreme Court to argue the point of term limits that's already been ruled unconstitutional.
What do you think some of the Supreme Court attorneys that may be feeling that it's unconstitutional?
That's right.
So, it's all an interpretation of the law.
And they've already interpreted the law when they ruled them unconstitutional.
Well, I don't agree with it.
Well, it doesn't matter whether we agree with it or not. It's the law.
The only people in Grants who are not for term limits are politicians.
I'm all about term limits, girl.
Are you?
Yeah. That's why I'm not running from here again, no matter what happens here.
Okay, we're gonna hold you to that.
You don't worry about it. You're not gonna hold me to it. I'm proud of my word.
Yeah, well, I...
I mean, really? Come on, guys.
I think the public supports term limits.
If they did support term limits, they'd have never voted her in for a third term, Laura.
I don't think they would.
They didn't know. Well, that's a poor damn excuse, guys. We need to make a decision here tonight.
I'd like to see us table this until we turn, talk to the attorney.
We already talked to the attorneys, Manny. We just told you. They gave us three options. We're giving you the three options to make the decision. Gee, man, knees.
I would just like to see us table it and get more information from the state and from the attorneys on both sides. That's my idea, so it's up to you guys.
They've already given us three choices.
They gave us our choices. The attorneys already told us. So, we're gonna table it and wait for the attorneys to tell us again?
There's three choices that we...
Come on, guys. That three choices the attorneys gave us.
Go ahead.
Period. Pick one, guys, and let's go with it.
They can sue us because the...
They can't sue us because the Supreme Court already ruled on it. Period.
Am I?
Period.
It's not about the language that we get sued for, it would be about how we're changing our charter.
It wouldn't, it doesn't matter.
That we didn't put it up for vote.
It doesn't matter because the charter was changed by the state Supreme Court. The charter was changed by the people of this town when they voted for Elise Larson for a third term. And you can sit here and say, they didn't know, they didn't know, the people of Grants are ignorant. I disagree with you. They knew exactly what they were doing when they voted her in there. They liked her. They like what she's done. And that's why they put it, that's why so many people are pushing me to run for a third term, which is not gonna happen. Okay? I'm about up to here with it. I mean, all I do is get attacked, no matter what I do, no matter how much good I do. I get attacked every time I turn around, in the newspapers, in my face, in my emails. You know they hacked my email here. You know they hacked my phone. I mean, so it doesn't matter. Let's get it over with. Let's do what's right.
Okay, so let's throw this out there. So, okay, we put it for a vote, and they vote to remove.
Then it's done. But if they vote to retain, then what do we do? Do we sue them because it's unconstitutional? Guys, the ruling is already been down. The state Supreme Court has ruled on this. It's a done deal. We have been in violation of the state Supreme Court's ruling by not removing this.
I think by not enforcing it, we're upholding the state ruling, but we're still making a point that we support term limits.
No, how are we making that point when we have someone that's in office for a third term? We're not making that point, Laura.
You made that point when Walter Hamael didn't make it back in for a third term.
That's right. Walter, Joe Burrieta, Fred Brodarte, they all were not very well liked, okay? Because they hadn't very well done their job here. And therefore, nobody wanted them to run for a third term. Elise R. Larson is just the opposite. She has done a damn good job as a judge. She brought Bucu stuff before this council that the county was doing wrong with bills and everything else. The people like her. That's why she got a third term. Period. Period. And these term limits are unconstitutional. The Supreme Court has ruled on this, guys. And that's the bottom line. We have three choices. So, let's pick one. I say we do it by ordinance. No one is gonna sue us anyway. And if they do, we're covered by the New Mexico State Supreme Court ruling. Boom, it's dead and void. No court will take the lawsuit because the Supreme Court has already ruled on it. And it's simple. If we do it by ordinance and we remove those two paragraphs right there, we put it in the newspaper, we put everything we're doing, and if the people show up here and they say, "No, Mayor, we don't want you to do that. We want term limits," well, hell, then we've got an argument. But right now, we have no argument at all because they already voted Elise Larson for a third term. It's already been before the New Mexico Supreme Court and ruled on. And it's time for us to fix our charter instead of sitting here saying, "Ah, we're in violation, we're in violation, we're in violation," every night when, actually, the charter is in violation of state constitutional law.
Yeah, the charter is...
The charter is in wrong, okay? Not us, and therefore, we need to fix it. And that's what I'm saying. So, I'm entertaining a motion. Let's do this by ordinance.
Motion to pursue the ordinance solution.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vosges? Council Lucero?
Yes.
Council Palia? Thank you, guys.
So, O'Shea, do you need an approval of a resolution for the...
The one that's in your packet.
The one that's in our packet without these words. Okay, so we're looking at resolution nineteen sixteen fifty, and it would be...
Just for the, um, the office that is better to be...
To let the state know our District One council position's open in our District Three.
In the back page of your book. This is the one we're approving, okay? This is the one we're approving, resolution nineteen sixteen fifty, and it doesn't have anything to do with the term limits. We'll take care of the term limits. O'Shea, see how long we need to do this? Because it's gotta go in the newspaper, all those good things for the ordinance. See if we can do it, probably by December. Okay, and that way, we give everybody ample notice, gives the paper plenty of time to write his notices, and we can go from there, okay? Okay, so it's resolution six, nineteen sixteen fifty. Go right. Comments from the council, Sidney?
I'd like to thank the few people who did participate in the sidewalk repair program. It's over and done now.
Did that work out well?
Well, apparently, people in Grants, but people of District Three do not want me to pay for their sidewalk repair.
I wish I lived in your district.
What more can I say?
I wish I lived in your district, Sidney.
So, I feel I have completed my campaign promise to the best of my ability. Spent a lot of money on advertising, spent money on attorneys, spent money on concrete. I'm done.
And thank you for the nice sidewalk I got.
We made a motion in pass sixteen fifty, didn't we? Who made the motion?
No, we didn't.
A motion.
Oh.
Yeah, and Red, Second, and everybody voted unanimously, okay? Let me have those ones that you need assault to sign.
I can remind you.
Anything else, Sidney?
No.
Manny?
Yep, I've got the paving on Second Street. And I say, Mark, no, but I'm talking about, it's already coming apart, it's already, the blacktop is coming up, and it's leaving rocks.
We're out.
So, that means, while we'll see if you fly by it.
On Second Street.
On Second Street. So, it's, it's gonna end up with potholes here not too long, so...
We're out on Second Street, Manny.
We got about three or four places that...
Is that the new paving?
Yeah. Did you look, did you look at it, too?
Yeah.
What did you think on it? Did you see the...
Very poor.
Yes, thank you.
I felt great because you guys were so hard on our guys. This is a professional crew.
I think it was wet or something when they put it in. But it's still, they still went and approved it. I haven't heard, I'm curious to hear.
Get on it and see what you got.
The good thing is, all their work's under warranty.
That's what I wanted to hear.
That's, we're not going to pursue warranty items until we can see a little bit.
They're the final inspection. Yeah, we haven't had our final walk-through with...
Right. No, and a lot of those issues got pointed out also during our...
During your last walk-through.
Did you fill off of the election one? Did you get it?
You need the election one signed by all of us, too?
No.
Yeah, I got it. I'm just having them sign it, that's enough. That way, the bar when it's done, I'll get all the other ones signed. I gotcha. Comments, Manny? You done?
Alright, that's all I see.
Red?
Mark, thanks for getting those solar algae lights. Those are, and thanks for taking me around to look at them.
Sure.
I think those are working pretty well, right?
Yes, sir.
We do have a few other areas that we're gonna take care of.
I'm hoping to increase the scope on next year's budget for a lighting program. I think we had initially thought forty thousand was enough just to kinda play around with, but because of the other projects that were going on, I think we shifted some funds away from there. So, as far as this year, I'm not, I'm not super positive on, but next year, I'm gonna propose about forty or fifty thousand dollars for more solar lights, yeah.
So, have they all been installed?
No, sir. So, the last two will go up on Mesa.
On Mesa, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Right, well, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Red?
Laura, I think Robert Winters, you took care of this, those, let me do it. There's another one, right, Fifth and High Street, East Side, we got jungle out there.
Okay.
You know, like, our quest for park.
Okay.
Laura, you got it here?
I do.
We took care of the charter, which I'm very pleased about. I won't have to say that for much longer, okay? The second one that I got here is the election coming up in March. We need to decide here very soon, guys, if we wanna move in with the counties or if we wanna stay on our own. Because if we're gonna move in on the county, we need to do this before June, right?
Yes.
Before June, we need to make that move. The only reason that I could see not going into the county is if we, we're gonna pass a voter ID law. We don't have a voter ID law. I don't see, I don't have it on my agenda to bring it up in any way, shape, or form. I don't have a problem with moving to the county election. The only thing is that it will extend my service by nine months, okay? And that's it. At that point, I'll be the longest-serving mayor in Grants, but I'm not running for a third term, guys. I'm telling you that now. I've said it before, I'm saying it again. Because I believe, you wanna see the face of term limits? Nancy Pelosi, Chuck Schumer, Elijah Cummings, Martin Heinrich, Tom Udall, the list goes on and on and all, why they should have term limits. And I'm not gonna be one of those guys.
Elijah Cummings won one of you in it.
Now, be one of them, okay? So, that's what I'm saying. If we're gonna move the election, we need more than I make that now, okay? The last, I got another thing with, I met with Social Porters yesterday over the spotted owl and the Forest Service. I got a bone to pick with the citizen on this, very issue. The citizen calls me for comment about the spotted owl and shutting down logging. And I gave him my comment, and they don't put anything in the newspaper. All they put in there is the Forest Guardian sign. Maybe that is because I said basically exactly what the Forest Guardian said. Maybe it's because I bashed our democratic leadership in Washington DC for doing absolutely nothing except trying to get rid of the president instead of trying to do what's right for New Mexico. The Green New Deal that Martin Heinrich, Tom Udall, and Social Porters have signed on to will kill this town. It will kill this state. And when I left that meeting yesterday, I left with such a bad taste in my mouth, I had to go home and brush my teeth. Okay, that's how sad this is. They're supposed to be able to help us with federal government issues, but they don't. You call them, you get crickets. Period. And it drives me absolutely crazy. And that's why I'm saying, please, 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 watch for who you vote for. Because if you don't, and they go through with this Green New Deal, all this illustrious money that we've had this last year, and what we're gonna have this next year, hopefully, is gonna be gone. It's all gonna be gone, and every business in this town will be hurting, shut down. So, please, please, think about what you're doing. And yes, I believe in term limits. Period, okay? On that note, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting now.
I saw...
Second, all in favor, say aye. Have a good night. Thank you.